I am going to call this meeting to order. And announce first that the regular meeting of the May 11th, the regular meeting of the Town Council of Michigan and Shores convened at 7:01 PM. At the time leading up to this meeting, the country is still facing a pandemic outbreak of the novel coronavirus, COVID-19. In response, Indiana Governor Eric Holcomb has issued a series of executive orders, which are things, declare, please keep your voices muted, keep your phones muted. Has issued a series of executive orders and declared a public health emergency and suspended various state statutes. The stat, this allows for us to be holding meetings via Zoom and video conference and telephone conference. The allowance is in effect according to the Order 2021-11 through the end of May or May 31st, at which time we will see if there's anything new. In accordance with the PSC guidelines, notice of the virtual meeting replacing the meeting at the fire station and access to the virtual meeting by video conference was posted on the town's website in advance of the meeting. So, to begin with, besides just making this announcement first, I'm gonna check if there's anyone waiting, just a minute, okay? And one coming. And I have someone else who just joined us, I have to figure who this is, the call-in user. Okay? In the meantime, I want to make an announcement to everyone that we have a new Town Council member, Ralph Box, who was sworn in. Okay, there's Ralph, he's waiting to you from the corner, those of you can see your screen. Ralph was sworn in last week on Friday, I believe, correct, Ralph?
Yes.
Okay, and he was chosen by the Democratic Caucus to replace Pam Doobie, who resigned from her position for health reasons. So, we welcome Ralph onto the Town Council. Thank you, Ralph, for joining us. Okay, thank you very much for joining us. Okay, so I am just going to ask, I have someone that has just recently joined the meeting and all I see is call-in user one. I need to know who you are, please unmute yourself and identify yourself for me, please. I just let you in a couple moments ago. You are on a telephone, I need to know who you are, please unmute. I believe it's star six to unmute, correct?
Correct.
Okay, press star six to unmute yourself and identify yourself for us for our meeting, please. Call-in user, please unmute. All right, I will, let me see, here we go, call-in. Where's my call-in viewer? Okay, Laura keeps dropping off, I don't understand, oh, she may be having trouble, okay. All right.
Dinah, if call-in user one can't figure out how to communicate to us, you're gonna have to kick him off.
Yeah, that's what I think, so I think that's gonna happen. So, call-in muse, call-in user, I admitted you to the meeting just about three minutes ago or so, please identify yourself to us. If you cannot identify yourself, I will put you into the waiting room. So, you do star six to let us know who you are. Okay, there we go, okay. So, now we are back to order here, let's see. Okay, let me see if anybody else is trying to get on here, no, nobody else, okay. So, let us continue with our meeting. So, Joan, could you please do the roll call?
Sure. President Dinah Dumbrus.
Present.
Michael Martinez, Vice President.
Not yet.
Not yet, okay, Ralph Box.
Present.
Mike Lanciaoni.
Mike is attending business meetings, he might not be here.
Okay, so he's absent. Rich Young.
I'm here.
Okay, good, I'm here too. Attorney Laura Nierenberg.
She is present.
Laura Nierenberg.
You know her.
Yes, I'm here, thank you.
Okay. Fire Chief Gary Bendix.
Absent.
Is absent. Fire, Police Chief Mark Swistec.
Present.
Thank you. Park Board President Dolly Millick. She evidently is absent. BVA President Matt Bowen, is he absent?
Absent.
Okay, Building Commissioner Steve Thomas, he's not here.
Yeah, he's no longer with us, they should have.
Right.
Really?
Flood Plate Administrator Wade Dumbrus.
Here.
Advisory Plan Commission President Howard Jablon, I bet he's absent too, right?
Absent.
Okay, Code Enforcer Deb Chubb. Okay. Website Samantha Arnold.
She is not able to attend.
Okay, and Road Commissioner Bob Sukowski.
I do not see him, absent.
Okay.
All right, thank you, Joan. Okay. We do have a forum, there are three Town Council members present. And we will proceed with our meeting as usual. Joan sent the minutes out to all council members, if you had a chance to take a look at the minutes.
You're gonna do the agenda?
Oh yeah, we have to do the agenda, thank you, Joan, for reminding me, okay. See, I was getting all excited about going through fast. So, okay, please take a look at the agenda, this afternoon I sent out a revised proposed agenda. Please let me know if there's something you would like to add, delete, supplement, or so forth.
Dinah, this is Ralph, I don't have any additions or changes.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Okay, I have, I believe this is Michael coming on now. All right, Rich, did you have anything you wanted to add to the agenda?
No.
Okay, thank you, all right. Michael, is that you who joined us now?
He didn't want to add nothing.
Michael?
Hi Dinah, I'm here.
Hi, good, okay, great, thank you. We're just going over the agenda, did you happen to have a chance to review the agendas? If there's anything you wanted to add?
The last one I reviewed was at 4:31, I saw some one come through at 6:55.
Uh, no, I sent it earlier, not 6:55, but I thought.
Okay, you know what, that was a response from Laura, so yeah, I did have a chance to review the revised one with my addition of Ralph.
Okay, all right, thank you. Does Dinah, does that just go to the board members? Just versus the board members.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so I need a motion to accept the agenda?
Almost makes a motion.
Okay, Rich Young.
Martinez seconds.
Michael Martinez seconded to accept the agenda. Okay, as presented, all in favor, say by saying aye.
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 Okay, thank you, and aye, so that we have four ayes. The agenda.
Who made the motion?
Rich made the motion, Joan.
I did.
Yeah, okay, I can't always determine the voices.
Dinah. Oh, okay, all right, I will repeat them for you then. Rich Young made the motion, Michael Martinez seconded.
Thank you. I got that.
Dinah? Now we can move on to the minutes. Dinah? I'm sorry? Dinah, we're gonna start doing roll call votes now. Okay, just even for the attendance, you, I mean, for the agenda, you wanted roll call?
As per what I read, they want roll calls on everything.
On everything, okay, fine, well then we can do a roll call vote right now. Again, we'll redo that then, okay. All right, again, we're gonna do the adopting of the meeting agenda as a roll call vote. Rich Young.
Aye.
Michael Martinez.
Aye.
Ralph Box.
Aye.
Dinah Dumbrus, aye.
So fun.
So, the ayes have it, the agenda has been accepted as proposed. Thank you, Laura. Let's move on to the minutes and the approval of the minutes, since everybody had a chance to review the minutes that Joan presented to us.
You missed it.
Who did I miss?
I'm sorry? I don't think you missed anyone, it was all, the four of us voted aye on the agenda.
I know, but.
Dinah, this is Ralph, as far as the meeting minutes are concerned, it's probably not appropriate for me to vote on them, because I was not a council member at the time. But I would say, as usual, when I review something, I find, you know, the, a few typos here and there, so I'll pass those along to Joan after the meeting.
Okay, thank you. All right, Rich, did you have something to add?
No.
Michael?
No.
All right, so in that case.
I think you should have the council, the, if he's got some typo, he wants in, Ralph Box wants in here, he should do it now, so you can approve it as.
As correct, okay, that makes a lot of sense, thank you, Joan, okay. Ralph, do you need quick corrections, whatever the typo for?
Joan, I'll speak to you. Resolutions and ordinances, that would be on page one. Ordinance is misspelled.
All right.
Ordinance 2021-01.
Oh, it sure is, I'd never see.
The second ordinance is missing the 2021.
Leaving, come back and get it.
What ordinance, what do you mean the second one?
Well, after misspelled ordinance 2021-01, and then.
Oh.
And ordinance dash 02, that should be 2021-02.
I thought they would understand that, but I'll get it changed.
A small thing, about halfway through that first paragraph, there's a term I didn't understand, provide the laminations on similar or standardized housing?
Well, I think it's limitations.
Okay.
That I got a a instead of aye.
Yeah, that's good. And if you go down to section A below that, on the second page. About halfway through, Mike Lanciaoni made a motion to adopt ordinance 2101-02. Of course, that should be 2021.
Yeah, I caught myself doing that all the way through.
Oh, I, yeah, I'm guilty of it too. And then if we drop down to under departmental reports. Item K, the COVID-19 meetings, second.
Okay, you're on page three.
Uh, yes. Item K, La Porte County COVID-19 meetings, get vaccinated, continue to wear, where is?
Oh, I changed it, it didn't change in here. It didn't, that's weird, I remember changing that, okay.
Next, under unfinished business, the first item A, Bob Sukowski to check with Railroad of Michigan City, this not in the Town of Michigan and Shores, I think that's.
This is not.
And then item B, Stop 38 and 41 is open, open is misspelled.
Okay.
And under miscellaneous business, item D.
Fourth page?
Yes.
Okay.
Item D, Bob Sukowski, Road Commissioner said he'd check into it. I don't know that Bob was at the last meeting, that's just the comment element.
No, but that's a comment at Dinah May.
Okay, he has sent an email.
Okay, that's all I got, thanks very much.
All right, thank you very much, Ralph, so if there are no other corrections to the minutes, I am going to ask motion to accept the minutes as corrected.
This is Ralph, I'll make the motion to accept the minutes as corrected.
All right, Ralph Box moved, made the motion, I need a second.
I'll take a second.
All right, Rich came up first, Rich Young seconds the motion, Ralph Box has moved, the, Rich Young has seconded, the approval of the minutes is corrected, I will call a roll to check your votes. Oh, Ralph Box?
Aye.
Rich Young?
Aye.
Michael Martinez?
Aye.
Dinah Dumbrus, aye. The ayes have it, Joan, thank you.
Four ayes?
Yes.
Thanks.
Thank you very much. All right, we move now to the resolutions and ordinance. An alternate purchasing agent ordinance had been prepared for us by Laura Nierenberg and presented to us, oh, I think it was about 10 days ago or so. I don't know, in fact, Laura, I didn't even check with you, if we are ready to move forward, if everybody has reviewed it and are, on this resolution. Laura, can we have a comment from you, please?
Yeah, I do not have it in front of me, I have to pull it up, do you want me, are you going to want me to read it again?
Well, because, I, well, first of all, let me just ask all of my council members who are present, have you reviewed the alternate purchasing agent, or agent ordinance 2020 that Laura had presented to us for review? Michael?
It's 2021-03.
2021-03, Michael, have you had a chance to do it?
Yeah, this is the one that was sent back in last week of April, right? Nothing's changed since then, there's documentation, yeah, I've had a chance to review.
Okay, and Ralph, have you had a chance to take a look at it?
I haven't received it, I wasn't on the Town Council.
Oh, that's right, okay, I'm sorry, I thought that you already had it. Okay, and Rich?
At the last council meeting, Attorney Nierenberg said she was going to check into the proper reading, not reading of it, but the statement that she was putting in there. Is this what you're talking about, that this has been changed since the last meeting? Or is this the same thing that was in the last meeting?
No, I think this is something that was changed that Laura had already looked into. Laura, can you answer that?
I'm trying to pull it up, folks, I'm sorry, I'm having.
Okay. All right, you know.
I feel frustrated.
Yeah, I am.
We can move on with something else, and then continue on to come back to this?
Good idea.
Okay, that'd be great, thank you.
So let's do that now, so let's.
Yeah, my apologies, folks.
No problem, let's move forward and go to reports from committees, officers, and the clerk treasurer, so Joan, could you please?
Right. And I didn't look, they didn't look.
Come up with the vouchers. Rich, you're gonna need to mute your phone, because we hear every comment everyone's making there. Okay, thank you. All right, Joan, please go.
Okay. Are you ready for me?
Yes, we are, please go ahead.
Okay, what suggestion I have is for me to read all these that are vouchers, you know, the list I gave you, to read all of them, and you could go ahead and vote on all of them, or do you want me to read each one of these individually? I sent you the summary of them earlier.
All right.
Which way do you want me to do it?
All right, any council comments on that? The summary, to read to the summary? Michael?
Yeah, I mean, just to follow how we've been doing it, we go line by line, and any questions we have, we raise them as we go through them.
Okay, but there's, there's five of them that we're gonna go through.
Okay, go ahead, Joan, what's your?
The March 2021 additional vouchers, Chase Card Services for the Adobe, $16.04, fuel for the Plow, the diesel fuel was 58.57, now fuel for the pickup truck, $104.51, internet, I'm sorry, not internet, yeah, it would be internet, it was Comcast for internet, that was $99.69, for a total of $278.81. Now, you wanna vote on this one before I go on to the next one?
Yes. All right, any questions? Okay, if there are no questions, then I'll entertain a motion to approve the vouchers. Ralph, are you moving?
Anybody moving?
Yeah, Ralph, did you make a motion, I can't?
Yeah, so make the motion to approve the vouchers from March 31st.
Okay, thank you. I need a second?
Martinez second.
Okay, thank you, Ralph moved, Michael Martinez seconded, just the vouchers from March, all in favor indicate by saying aye when I call your names, Ralph Box?
Be careful.
Yeah, I'll be careful.
I fell in the bush.
I know, I know, Ralph.
Rich Young?
Aye.
Michael Martinez?
Aye.
Okay, Dinah Dumbrus, aye. The ayes have it, thank you, Joan, go on.
Okay, I shall move on. April, additional vouchers for April. Nipco, $167.29. AT&amp;T, $62.52. Sandcastle Landscaping for $100. Chase Card Services, $204.48. La Porte County Herald Dispatch for the BVA Special Use Petitions, $862.14. Friedman and Associates for. Oh, I think I got that wrong. I have a $2,000, but I think it's supposed to be $1,500 a month, right?
Is that for Joan?
No.
Is it $1,000 a month?
Yes, it is.
It is $1,000 a month, I'm sorry, I don't have all the records, I have summaries.
Okay.
Okay, that was then, that was for March and April, $2,000. Jim McCa, $122.50, that's repairing my computer. Excuse me. Baker Tilly, $430.35, they're the ones that are advisors for our budget. For grand total of $4,249.28. Any questions?
Council members, no questions? If there are no questions, then I'll entertain a motion to accept these vouchers as presented.
This is Ralph, I'll make a motion to accept the vouchers as presented.
All right, Ralph, moved, I need a second?
Martinez second.
Okay, Michael Martinez seconds, the accepting of the vouchers. All in favor indicate by saying aye when I call a roll, Ralph Box?
Aye.
Michael Martinez?
Aye.
Rich Young?
Aye.
Dinah Dumbrus, aye. The ayes have it, these vouchers are accepted. Joan, please move on.
Okay. The next one is for the White Ditch Levy. We have 96 parcels, and of the 96 parcels, our levy total was $541.20.
Really?
All is on this one, pardon?
It's cheap.
Thank you.
Well, we all pay it, so that spreads it out, everybody who has property.
Well.
You wanna take a vote?
Okay, that's it on this particular voucher?
That's it.
Okay.
I will move that we accept that.
Okay, thank you.
Ralph seconded.
Ralph Box second, I mean, yes, Ralph Box seconds, all in favor indicate by saying aye, Rich Young?
Aye.
Ralph Box?
Aye.
Michael Martinez?
Aye.
Dinah Dumbrus, aye. Thank you, the ayes have it, the vouchers approved. Okay, Joan, thank you, keep going.
Four ayes. April 30th payroll. So, we have one employee who is receiving monthly, plus on this one, we also have Steve Thomas's, his timesheet for the March 30th ending pay was not turned in till May 7th, signed, and then he accepted, I'm not accepted, he turned in his resignation, so that's what's on this particular payroll.
Okay.
It also includes the FICA and the Medicaid, the payroll wages, and the employee part of the, the taxes and the employer part, I won't read them all, the whole total on the payroll was $6,016.10.
Okay, any questions from council members?
Joan, I have a simple question related to Steve, was, was, is his, was his salary a fixed salary spread out over 12 months, or was it based on how much time he worked?
It was based on the salary for 12 months, but we paid quarterly.
Okay.
And he, if you're under a certain amount salary, you do have to complete a timesheet, because we never know how many hours, if they put more than 40 hours in a week, we still have to pay them time and a half.
Okay.
That's federal guidelines, not mine.
Sure, thanks. I make a motion to approve the salary as payroll.
Okay, thank you. Ralph, Box has moved to accept this payroll, I need a second?
So moved.
Rich Young second, uh, second motion, so Ralph Box?
Aye.
Rich Young?
Aye.
Michael Martinez?
Aye.
Dinah Dumbrus, aye. The ayes have it, this voucher has been approved for payment, thank you, Joan, you still have one more, you said, right?
I don't know, do I?
April payroll or May payroll?
Budget.
Joan, the May payroll.
Oh, good grief. Okay, I guess I left that, no, this. Not, not May payroll, it was April payroll.
It's the May expenses, $16,770.94.
Yeah, May, I believe May, I don't think you've.
Oh, hold on.
Covered it.
Hang on. May 11 vouchers, that's what I didn't do, okay guys, you caught me.
You're guilty.
Yeah, I'm guilty as charged, okay. Anybody else want my job?
No.
No.
Oh, shoot.
Oh, heaven, no.
Darn.
Nobody's that dumb.
You're not that dumb, huh, okay. Let me go ahead with the May 11 regular vouchers. Rental for the fire station, $105. Fire protection for May, $3,575.8. Police protection for May 20, for 2021, $4,877. Rescue services, $3,888. For Department of Water Works of Garage, $9.49 for water, Kincaid Park, $9.49. For Brenda Heckman traveling to the bank and post office for April, $41.76. Office supplies, that included the console flyer, printing, postage stamps for it, $171.43. For La Porte County Building Department, the inspections from January to April ran $500. For Comcast, for internet, $79.69. And for Baker Tilly. And for Baker Tilly, for the financial report for, uh, March, thirty-five hundred dollars. And for, um, Deb Chubb for postage, fourteen dollars. For a grand total of sixteen thousand, seven hundred and seventy dollars and ninety-four cents.
Um, any questions from the council members?
Uh, again, this is Ralph. I'm, I'm new. The Baker Tilly thing, Joan, I don't need you to explain all of it now. I can talk to you about that separately. But is that an occasional thirty-five hundred dollars or is that every month?
No, that's once a year.
Okay.
It's once a year. They are our accountants. I'm not an accountant, so I am not doing that.
Yeah, they're just checking the books. Thanks, that's what I mean.
Yeah, that, that's, yeah, they, and plus they print the re- I mean, they do the report and it, we have to print it. It's printed in a newspaper and it's posted on the, um, door to the entry hall. And, um, also the council gets a copy of it.
Thank you.
Okay, I make a motion, this is Rich Young, to approve the May vouchers.
Thank you.
Ralph, I second that motion.
Ralph Fox seconds. Uh, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Rich Young?
Aye.
Ralph Fox?
Aye.
Michael Martinez?
Aye.
Diana Dumbres, aye. The ayes have it. These vouchers have been approved for payment. Thank you, Joan. Um, did you have anything else to tell us today, Joan, in regards to, uh, any reports of you?
I don't have any reports. Uh, I don't know of anything that came in, you know, for council.
Okay.
I, I think, usually I try and send it to you as I get it because I do not have a memory bank built into my brain. So, it's easier for me to go ahead and send it to you when I get it.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay. Um, now, I have to make, you know, we all accepted the agenda, but in that second part portion, we actually voted on last month. So, uh, the STR permit application form revision was already done to straighten it out and clean it up. Um, that was the only change we made, just FYI, so everybody would know that in the public. All we did was, uh, we had Deb cleaned it up for us and I makes a nice looking document.
And, uh, Diana, just to be clear, we're special remembering, this is the one that we put on the website, right?
Uh, I believe that it's up already. Uh, Deb would know, Samantha, I didn't look for it. Deb, do you know?
Um, you know, I, I don't know. I didn't check on there, I'm sorry.
I checked a few days ago and it was still all the old information, but...
Oh, it was? Okay.
Um, just follow up.
Yeah, okay, we'll have to do that with Samantha. She's not with us today, so we'll check up on that. Okay, thank you. That's a good question, Michael. Thanks. Um, okay, so we move into departmental reports at this time. So, uh, Police Chief Mark Swistek, the floor is yours.
Good evening, everyone. For the Long Beach Police Department during the month of April, for the three communities that we serve, we responded to two hundred and seventeen calls for service. When compared to ninety-four calls for service in the previous year, for an overall increase of a hundred and twenty-three calls for service. Specifically related to, um, Michiana Shores, we patrolled three hundred and five miles, spent seventy hours of patrol presence. We had a total of five traffic stops, all resulting in written warnings. And we had no arrests for the month of April.
Awesome.
Other than that, um, it was a pretty steady month, but uneventful for the town of Michiana Shores.
Okay, well, that, that's good news, I think. Thank you. Does anybody have questions for the chief? No questions for the chief?
No.
Okay. Uh, chief, I know that we're putting out our, I know that, um, uh, we'll have another newsletter out for the residents and we will be reminding them about the, the golf cart ordinance requirement. Um, I saw that the one in Long Beach is already in effect, started in April, I think. So, uh, you know, I think that, um, I'm, or at least I'm hoping that if you do encounter anybody with golf carts, that you could check with them to see if they have actually registered, okay, when you're cruising through our town too.
Can, uh, Diana, can someone send me, um, what your current sticker looks like? If you could email that to me so I can share it with the deputies?
Okay, that would have to be Joan. I don't even know what it looks like. Rich might know because he's got a golf cart, but, uh...
I don't know. It, it, that's funny. There are probably two out in the neighborhood.
Yeah, there are a lot more golf carts out though than two.
Oh, yeah, I know. I, and I just...
Two or three already, yeah.
Okay.
Joan, if you could send that to me, it'd be much appreciated. And just for everyone's knowledge, for everyone's knowledge, um, the town of Long Beach, we do our golf cart registration Monday through Friday from 8:00 AM till 3:30 PM. And then on Saturdays from 7:30 AM up to 2:30 PM on Saturdays. So you can come into the town hall and register. You must have proof of financial responsibility upon registering your golf cart. Aside from that, thank you, everyone.
Thank you very much.
Well, wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute. I've got a question. Yeah, I have a question.
I'm still here.
You're in Long Beach. You're saying Michiana, people can come? Officer or Chief Swistek?
Yes, Rich. If you're going to travel into the town of Long Beach with your golf cart, you must have a Long Beach permit to use the roads in Long Beach.
But you're not talking about our people and stay, you know, locally?
No, no, not if they're in the town of, uh, Michiana Shores, you're fine.
But, but we do need to tighten that up. I agree.
All right.
Diana, uh...
Yes, Ralph, go ahead, go ahead.
Uh, along this topic, it, it raises, um, a general, uh, related item. So, and maybe somebody knows, but what are the rules about driving our golf carts? I don't have one, but a golf cart licensed in Michiana Shores into Michiana, Michigan? Or Dunland? Or, you know, some place other than Long Beach? If you're gonna put something in the, um, uh, notice to the, um, the, the town, we probably want to do a little investigation there because we know now that we need to have a, a permit for Long Beach if we're gonna drive through there. Uh, I have no clue if Rich takes his golf cart across the street, does he need a different permit, um, to do that? If he's driving on the north or the south side of, uh, Shannon Drive?
Well, I think Ralph, Ralph, this is Rich Young. I think that if we adopt a similar thing for like Long Beach, then it would apply to most of these communities, and that's what we need to do.
Uh, I, I agree, but based on our, um, current track record of updating ordinances and approving them, it'll be well into summer before that would be done.
Well, it doesn't have to be.
It can be done next month if you get the ordinance.
Yeah.
That's a very good comment that you made, Ralph. I like that. I have no idea because I've never heard anything from the village of Michiana, Michigan. I'm not sure. Chief Swistek, do you have more information on that stuff?
On Dunland Beach, I'll have to check with their president, um, Mary Ann Fumo for you. But Michigan, I know, uh, Grand Beach, Michigan, they do have a permit, uh, registration requirement there. And I want to say theirs is a couple hundred dollars.
Wow. Michiana, Michigan is two hundred bucks. I, um, saw it.
Really?
The rules not too long ago. So, uh, Rich, I agree with you. At a minimum, we should work to update ours because, you know, it's simple and it's out of date. And we can generally copy what Long Beach has done to, uh, to effect. But we do need to take into account, at least for our citizens, um, all the other rules around us because people are gonna be driving through Michiana to go to the beach with golf carts every day.
True. All right, uh, then maybe, uh, I can ask for a volunteer who wants to work on that ordinance to redo it.
I, I think, I think Ralph...
I'm sorry.
Ralph should be in charge.
Um, I have another question since you're updating. We also have county residents that use the, uh, and Michigan City residents. Um, it's not just the town of Michiana Shores.
Yeah, you're right.
Uh, that needs to be considered also. Are we going to allow them with their golf carts to go through to town of Michiana Shores to go to the beach?
I, I, that's what I say. This is a, this is a complicated thing, although it's simple. Um, but...
Good, you can do it.
I, I'm gonna tell you right now.
I nominate you.
Wait, Joan.
I, Joan, I already did.
This week.
I know you did, I'm sorry. My nomination doesn't count.
Everybody else, please, let's wait. Ralph is speaking. Let's listen to what he says. Thank you.
My experience is, as much as I want things to happen quickly, things like changing an ordinance take time and effort. And if we're gonna change our ordinance significantly, it is very unlikely it's gonna get signed off in a month. But we can go that route. I'm just gonna tell you, I'm gonna be pissed off if I don't get any feedback if I go to the effort to write something, which is what my experience has been so far.
All right. That's a, that's a very good comment, Ralph. I like that. Well, but we do have an ordinance in place right now and it does have a fee in place for a permit. So we do have something that we can use in the meantime. And this is something as a project that, you know, we couldn't expect to get done really fast.
Well, what I would do is I will take it, uh, as something to work on. But, uh, I think I will include Rich and Mike in that conversation because they have golf carts.
There we go.
Hopefully, they know kind of how the rules are supposed to work.
All right. Sounds like a great plan. Thank you. All right, uh, let us go on then to our next report. Thank you, Chief Swistek. Uh, Fire Chief Ben Dix is not with us at our meeting today. Uh, however, uh, he did send a report through. So I will just give a very quick, uh, report for you. The two hundred and forty-eight point fifteen hours were spent either on calls or attention, uh, for attention, training at home and away, meetings at home and away, and public relations or equipment maintenance. Uh, training meetings were on April 7th and 28th, business on the 14th, and maintenance on the 21st. Uh, there were no special training sessions. There were calls for attention at, um, I think that, um, there were one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven calls for attention. There were two responses in Michiana Shores, uh, no fires. There were two fires in Michiana, Michigan, and one, uh, I guess a first aid response. Uh, Dunland Beach had one first aid kind of response, mutual aid. There were three fires and one, uh, first aid response. So that's it for the, uh, fire department's, uh, reports. Uh, so, uh, thank you to Gary Vendix. I don't know, can I grab that? I can't. Okay. Just a minute, I'm gonna answer Dolly's call very quick. All right, thank you for your patience. We, uh, just took care of Dolly. Dolly was trying to get on and she couldn't, so... Um, anyway, let's move on to, uh, build, okay. We don't have a new building commissioner's report since we, our building commissioner is gone. Uh, I can report for you though that there were several, uh, smaller permits that were, were approved and passed uh, because the plan commission reviewed them. So I think we have four that went out with regards to them. And then there's a few larger, you know, things that can be reported under the plan commission. Uh, the, uh, Dolly Millig, who just tried to reach us. You know, just asked, uh...
Diana, Diana.
Make a comment. So Rich, would you like to add something? Pardon?
Well, yeah, I, I wanna know what happened with Steve Thomas.
Okay, Steve Thomas, uh, his, um, I guess it was getting a little bit difficult for Steve Thomas to accomplish all of his tasks, including his regular life and all the other things that he had taken on, uh, to work on. And I guess he realized that he was letting us sort of fall by the wayside as things were going and he wasn't able to, um, accomplish and, and do the work that he should do for us. So he resigned, you know, from his position.
Because I remember you asking me to sit in with a meeting with him.
The meeting never took place. He was...
Well, I, I understand that. I wasn't there. But I didn't know he had resigned. So we're actively looking for a building inspector.
Yes, we will be, yes. And see, Rich, uh, we always send out all the notices via email. And, you know, I always, uh, it slips my mind that you're not connected electronically, so...
Yeah.
So that's, that's a problem. But, you know, we did make the announcement that he, um, he resigned before we could have a conversation. Uh, and yes, we will be looking for a new building commissioner. So that's, uh, that, that is something that's gonna be a serious issue. I'm sorry?
Do you remember I talked to you about talking to a certain resident?
Yes, yes, I do.
I don't know if I should, I should mention it.
Well, then, you know what? These are things that, you know, we can bring up later on. I have, um, I didn't include it, but I figured in council comments, we'd be able to bring any of these up.
Okay, okay.
If somebody wanted, okay?
Okay.
Thank you, thank you. But do you have any comments now for the park or part, you know, does, does Dolly's have one?
Yeah, um, with the park, we have ordered, we have, Dolly can't get on?
No, she can't. She kept trying. I think she has the wrong number, so...
Yeah, I think. Anyway, um, we have ordered the benches for the new path. We have ordered a bike, um, you know, a bike, uh...
Bike rack?
Bike rack to put kind of between, on, on Dream, uh, not Dream, um, what is that?
Oakdale?
Oakdale. And, and then people, because Joan has ordered new signs with the benches. And we have, uh, doggy, doggy stations ordered for the new path. So there's, there's a lot going on with the park. I, I don't exactly know if it's through the park district or through the boosters. And, and we have people that want to dedicate their bench, the, the new benches. So...
Okay.
This stuff is all on order and I am going to replace the old split rail fences at the entrance and the, um, well, both entrances to the old path. I'm going to spend money for it.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead. All right, that sounds very good. And I know that there are some more, um, things in, uh, process with regards to replacing or repairing the bench that, uh, was destroyed at Leeds Park. Um, I know there's a new, uh, and maybe a new picnic table in the park.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I have to do that.
Yes. And, um, and then also from the boosters, I can just add that we're working also on, uh, getting the, um, children's, all the children's toys painted and make everything, you know, safer and more pleasant to you. So we're, we're just getting the information on how much it's gonna run. And, and we have some volunteers who have already volunteered to do some work on getting things fixed up and cleaned up and everything for that.
Yeah.
Okay, so thank you. I think that's about it for the parks then, right? Okay. Um, let us move on to the next part and that would be road commissioner, except that he is not here. He was notified and invited to the meeting, but I have not heard from him. Um, okay, so nothing?
I will, Diana?
Yes, Rich.
I, I did bring to the attention of, of, uh, Mr. Solkowski. Uh, there is a sign that has been kind of angled...
Okay.
At, uh, the old Ponche Train where it goes one way.
Yes.
And, and request to clean up the debris there by...
Okay.
That one-way street.
Yes, thank you. That, that is a good idea. I also mentioned, I spoke with Nick Solkowski when we did the park cleanup. And oh, by the way, I haven't thanked everybody, but I'll do that later. Uh, we, um, the, uh, uh, mentioned to Nick, uh, overgrown, uh, what is it? I guess growth that's hanging over the trees that might be hitting people in the face or something like this should be trimmed. And we talked about, you know, corners and such like that, but it was just a casual conversation with him about that, you know, to mention food, yeah.
Dinah, this is Ralph.
Yeah.
Just to point out, the reason Bob hasn't responded, of course, is that, uh, he had surgery.
Yeah.
It was a week ago.
Ah.
I'm not sure if he's, uh, back in action yet.
Oh, he's around, but I don't know if he's back full.
Okay.
Alright, thank you for letting us know. Okay. Um, and thanks, Rich, for the other information. Alright.
Yeah.
Uh, the Advisory Plan Commission, uh, that would come from Howard Jablon. Um, as I mentioned, that there were some smaller, uh, uh, lesser petitions that were brought forth because they needed review. Since Steve Thomas was not there, so those were approved. Then, uh, there was an approval given for the construction of a brand-new home at thirty-eight forty-five Michiana Drive. That's where, um, a very, um, a house had to be demolished. It was, it was, uh, in bad condition. So, that one was, uh, torn down, and this person is going to be building a new home. And then there's still several other, other, you know, permits out there waiting for, uh, to be addressed. So, a lot of other kind of, um, everyday issues that were, were, um, very concerning to the Plan Commission and the work that they're doing, uh, in putting, working on a rules procedure for the, um, for the Plan Commission. So, we had a report on that. Uh, and I believe that, uh, that, because more of that information will be available then in the minutes of the Plan Commission. Um, BCA, I did not receive-
Dinah?
Yes?
Dinah?
Yes, Ralph?
Did I ask you, are you acting, acting right now as the Building Commissioner?
No, I am not. All I'm doing is funneling questions. Uh, it calls them and they're directed to me. And I only do that as the Acting Secretary of the Plan Commission. I make no decisions. Currently, Matt is reviewing any kind of petitions that are in, just to review them, since he has, uh, ample, you know, what is it, experience with regards to the building.
Yeah, yeah.
But they're being signed by our Code Enforcer and Assistant Building Commissioner, who is Deb Chubb.
Okay.
And these, and everything, until we have a new Building Commissioner, basically, anything that is, any kind of question raised is going to, uh, to, uh, actually to the Plan Commission for review, even a short review, so, which was like-
I think I, we did that years ago.
Yeah. So, anyway, but that's what's happening right now again.
Yeah.
Yes, and I know you did that years ago too, yeah.
Years ago.
Yep, thank you. Alright. Um, so, BCA, I don't have another report. I don't think there was the meeting last, in fact, I know there was no other meeting last month, uh, but there is the meeting taking place this month. They've moved it from the twentieth to the twenty-seventh, though. So, the BCA meeting will take place May twenty-seventh. Uh, Code Enforcement, Deb Chubb, do you have something to add for us?
Um, so, yeah, as you said, there's no, there was no BCA meeting, so we didn't, um, review any, uh, new applications for, um, short-term rental, uh, special use grants. So, um, I believe there's a couple of people here tonight who will be talking about the Town Council permit, um, request. Uh, but, yeah, that's about it. Otherwise, just, um, you know, monitoring the building sites and short-term rentals, um, uh, and, uh, working with applicants.
Okay, thank you. Alright. Thank you very much. Any questions for Deb?
No.
Okay. Alright, then, uh, White Ditch, uh, the Drainage Board, there's nothing new for Michiana Shores. Uh, well, with them, which is good to hear all the time, so, uh, that's all I could say from that one. Uh, Samantha Arnold said she is working on our new, uh, platform for our website, but had nothing basically to report right now. Um, she does update the current website with information to be able to log on and so forth. We can't manipulate a lot of it, which is why we will be migrating to another platform, so, and she's working hard on that, besides actually working, working. You know, she's helping us out with that, so, uh, we thank Samantha Arnold. Uh, there, I have nothing new to report from NERC. Our next meeting will be taking place this month, so I may have more information for us in, at the June meeting. And, uh, the Lepore County COVID-nineteen meetings take place every Thursday. Phil keeps talking about the necessity for people to get vaccinated, uh, to make sure that if they are not vaccinated, and even those who are, to make sure they maintain their social distancing. Uh, wearing of the masks, whores, was still encouraged here, and, um, encouraging people to apply for jobs, because there are a lot of openings within-
Yeah.
The, um, the county, and they are not able to fill the jobs. So, you know, if you know of people looking for jobs, there's all over, including the county itself, the, um, you know, so there are, there's a lot of opportunities, so spread the word around to people of, that, you know, in case they say that they need a job, well, there are things to apply for within Lepore County. Um, so that's a big thing that they've talked about. Now, um, let us move on, then if we're done with our reports, I'm gonna take us over to unfinished business. And under unfinished business, we have, uh, from last month, the outdoor message boards. Uh, Rich, can you give us any other info on that?
Yeah, I, I really didn't talk to Joan today. Uh, you were talking about putting a sign at our, like, fifteen-minute parking.
Yes, one sign would go up in that area of the fifteen-minute parking, somewhere nearabouts, and, uh, then the other sign would go up at Kincaid Park.
Yeah, Kincaid is not a problem. Joan, do you, do you know if we own any of that property where our, you know, like, fifteen-minute parking is? Off our, uh, you know, Grand, uh, Michiana?
I don't have any idea. I'd have to do some checking on that.
I just know that the people that live there would not wanna sign there.
Well, it- You know what, we can worry about the sign, actual sign placement, okay, as, as we go on. What we need to do today, and we heard that we just approved a bill for over eight hundred dollars to publish notices in the local paper. And if these kind of message boards will allow us to post information, you know, we have it on the website, and if we could post it, like on these signs, we're going to save ourselves an immense amount of money. So, I'm, I'm-
I agree.
Going to make a suggestion that somebody make a motion that we purchase two of these message boards. I think they cost about, Joan, I believe the ones from Uline, and Rich, I think you saw them too, they were what, about four hundred and fifty dollars, or is that-
No, six fifty.
Six fifty.
I think they were four fifty, yeah.
Yeah, so, we would approve the purchase, two of these signs. So, we have one at the town already, so we have two more, and we will put them somewhere, because this will really help the town, the town out financially. So, I, anybody, uh, would like to entertain making a motion for this?
Well, hold on, hold on. Um, so, we would, we would post something at the Town Hall, at the fire station?
Yes, in that message board that's outside.
Right, and then we would, uh, post, uh, same information, say, at Kincaid Park on one of these new message boards. Do we wanna buy the third one if we don't know?
We have to, we have to. It's the state law, we need three.
Oh, you're gonna have to, okay.
We have to. They posted in three places, which is why we need three. So, we would-
Alright, Dinah, Dinah?
Yes.
We need to know, and maybe Joan knows, I hope Joan knows, that sign board in front of our office.
Mm-hmm.
Who owns that?
That's the-
Joan, go ahead.
Fire Department, in the Fire Department, I've spoken to them, they were gonna take it down. And, uh, before they got it taken down, I asked them if it would be okay for the town to use it. And they said we could. We do have to figure out, uh, you know, if it's still, it's a lockable one, but I don't know if that works or not. We may have to order the third one, so, Rich, if you come in, maybe you can look at it and see if it's worth. Uh, we do have to get a new plastic, um-
Yeah. I, I, as a councilman, I don't think we own the property by the lake, and I don't think the people, if we put a sign up, sign board up there, I don't think it'll work.
I think it's part of the town right-of-way.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, but still gonna-
It's town right-of-way.
I agree with Rich, if the town wanted to put a sign up in my yard, I'd have a fit.
It's not in their yard, it's, it's next to it.
Yeah, but-
Yeah, it's, it's not on their property at all.
If, if we don't need to do that.
Signs are not-
Thank you. Listen, we don't need to, thank you for your comments, we don't need to make a decision where it will be posted now.
Okay.
What we need to do is make a motion and second it and approve the actual purchase of at least two of these sign boards. We can determine the placement of the second sign board, even in a side meeting, we don't have to do it tonight. So, please, let's entertain the motion to purchase these sign boards, message boards.
This is Ralph, I'll make the motion to, uh, approve the purchase of the message boards.
Thank you, I need a second.
It's almost-
Mark, mark.
Okay. Ralph, as well, Rich Young has seconded to purchase two new message boards for us to use through the town in order to, uh, be able to display what is taking place and, uh, publish. In other words, uh, anything that needs to be published for the town. Uh, I will call Ralph, uh, to collect your votes. So, all in favor, please indicate by saying a when I call your names. Ralph Fox?
Hi.
Rich Young?
Aye.
Michael Martinez?
Aye.
Dinah Dumbrus, aye. The ayes have it, we have approved the purchase of two message boards to use for the town. Thank you very much for doing this. Now, uh, the last time, our next step goes to the railroad crossing repair. Uh, Bob Solkowski last week had written to me telling me that he had not received any kind of response, and now we hear that he has that surgery, uh, so I know nothing more to respond to you, um, to report about the railroad cross, unless you know something, Rich, or Joan.
I know-
All I know is that's Michigan City.
Yes, yes, we know that. And Bob was, uh, was contacting Michigan City about it.
But I, I, for years, I've wanted to make it look like, you know, down by Grand Beach or something.
Yes, that would be very nice, I agree, Rich.
Yeah, uh, yeah.
It'd be nice. If we could do-
For years, I've wanted to-
It'd be very lovely, uh, especially to counteract the way all those trees were, were cut down. Okay, so we'll move on from that and hope that Rich has a report for us as we go on. I'm sorry, Bob Solkowski, I'm sorry, Rich, okay. Uh, see, uh, let's go on to that. Now, Rich, do you have any other news? We already know about the beach there, but do you have any other information, is this something we should be working on?
No, no, uh, well, the only information at the last park board meeting, I, I had told our members that I had offered, you know, money to the be, uh, to the Michigan side. But that Rusty Bruch, or whatever-
Yes.
Did not, he did, no, and he did it mostly himself.
Yeah, okay.
But I told them that we would take care of the beach stuff, you know, if, if there's, uh, turn boards or, you know, whatever.
Okay, thank you. Alright.
But they did a, they did a, they did a nice stuff.
Yes, that's thirty-seven.
Dinah, this is Ralph.
Go ahead, Ralph.
Uh, thirty-seven's open, as you know. There are, uh, temporary stairs, you know, the metal aluminum, um, stairs that are, look to be going in place at thirty-eight. The stairs are down there, but they haven't done stuff or, uh, anything to them yet, so I don't know what the plan is there. Um, no activity at thirty-nine. Uh, forty-one and a half, they're putting in brand-new stairs there. Um, and I think additional, uh, kayak, uh, spots, and, uh, forty-two is now open as well.
Oh, thank you, Ralph. That's a lot of information, thank you, Ralph. Okay, great, thanks, Rich, and thanks, Ralph, for the info on that. Okay, um, let us move on to new business. There are several things that, uh, we need to begin to worry about. Uh, the first of which is the preparation of a resolution that would help us establish a fund for that were available to us from the Recovery Act. So, Laura, we're gonna ask you to help us work on this, to put together that resolution, because we need to establish a fund from which we would be able to draw money to pay for some expenses that would be incurred with regards to, you know, the, anything that might have happened with regards to, uh, the COVID-nineteen, uh, pandemic.
We did just recently do one of those, did we not, Joan, about four months ago?
I, I can't hear you.
Uh, for the last round of payments, didn't we do an ordinance similar to what Dinah's speaking about?
We have to, we have to establish a separate fund for this.
It has to be funded. They're telling us we have to establish a separate fund.
Yeah.
And they have, uh, the fund numbers and everything for it. And then, we have to decide what we're gonna use it for. It can't just sit there for anything we choose. It has to be anything connected to coronavirus, so if anyone has any suggestions, it would be helpful.
Okay.
I suggested possibly the signs that, um, that we're posting, we could use that for COVID stuff also, and maybe use the money to buy the signs.
Mm-hmm, thank you, thank you. Alright, so, but that would be to, to put that together. So, we got Joan participated in that, um, in that, uh, webinar, as did I, so we can pass the information over to you regards to putting together a resolution, okay? Thank you.
It would be helpful, thank you.
Yes. Um, then, the next, uh, issue that I think we need to address as a town is the codification of our town ordinances. Um, the last time the town ordinances were codified was in two thousand and nine, and I know it's a big, uh, undertaking, and it's an expensive undertaking, but I think we need to do that, because we have ordinances that have been passed since, and they are not easily, uh, available or readily available for, to the, um, residents of the town. Um, and we can't, there's no way for them to tie to some of the ordinances that have already changed. So, uh, I think it's something for us to really think about now, so, council members, I'd like your comments.
I agree.
This is Ralph. Um, in working on, um-
Thank you, Rich.
The, uh, the efforts that I did in the Plan Commission, I spent a lot of time looking at, uh, Long Beach and the similar, uh, town ordinances, um, and, uh, they have, uh, a different approach than we have. Theirs is a, you know, it's a more up-to-date, it seems to be a third-party system. Um, they don't just have a PDF file posted on the website. They have a, uh, the whole thing is codified, and you can search through it, and, um, it's organized, uh, much, it's much easier to find information. Um, and Long Beach isn't the only one that uses this stuff. Um, others do as well. Now, what I don't know is how it came to be. Like, I'm sure at some point, Long Beach had what we have. They had a PDF document years ago, or the, the, a similar thing.
Oh, come on.
Turned into this. Um, but I don't know anybody in, uh, Long Beach or that I can talk to. Now, I do have a friend-
Can I make a comment before we get into a lengthy discussion here? There are businesses that do codification, and I think our town would be wise to hire one of those codification companies, and that's the third party you're talking about.
Uh, yeah, I, I fully agree, Joan.
It's not gonna be cheap, but it would, they would go through all of our ordinances. They may even do something with our present code as far as changing the codification.
Okay.
They wouldn't change what's in the code and written, but they would bring it up to date.
Yes, I think that's-
And Joan, do you have some of these references of these third parties?
I have one, uh, that, uh, came up, uh, just recently, uh, and I haven't approached them, because I didn't have the authorities from anyone yet, and I hadn't asked about it yet. I have been so busy with other work, I haven't had time to even think about now.
Okay.
I'm gonna have more time. Um, I don't have to have so much time spent at home, so I can get, um, a lot more work done.
Thank you, Joan. Um, I also-
I spent all day at the office today.
Yes, Joan did, I know, because I had to drop stuff over there and I found her there, so, yes, she did.
She's a good woman.
Yes, Rich?
She's a good woman and a good town, um, official.
Yes, yes, she is.
Thank you, Rich, official.
We're grateful to have Joan, uh, very much.
For years, for years, we're grateful.
Yep. Uh, Joan, I also collected a few names. When I was down at that AIM, um, wood camp last year, I collected several more names of companies that, uh, do codifications, so- that do codifications, so I will dig those up and share those with you, too.
Okay, that would be good.
Yeah, and as, just as a note of interest for this, when I was speaking with Samantha earlier, she's trying, what she would like to do is basically put everything into that kind of an easy format, I mean, the existing ordinance, Ralph, the way it was searchable on the other sites, and yes, I know what you're talking about because I have recently been looking at the various different, for another issue, I've been looking at the various towns here in Northwest Indiana. So, and I found, you know, how easy it was to look through those, with Samantha's trying to do that so that on our website, it would be easier for people to navigate. And, and I know she reached out to me with regard, and I think to Laura with regards to, you know, maybe what can be done. So, anyway, but that's just FYI about this. But I do, I do want us to get started on this process because I would like to actually ask for a motion that we, this becomes a priority for us, that we get this taken care of, and not put this off. Michael, did you have a comment or a question?
Sorry, I couldn't answer you. No, I just gave my feedback about reflexes for just...
I will make the motion.
Okay, so...
It does need to be a priority, and we do need to hire it out, you know, we...
Absolutely, I agree.
Internally, we cannot do this.
Oh, no, you're right, you're right. Okay, Ralph, Rich Young has moved that we prioritize the codification. Do I have a second?
I second the motion.
Okay, Ralph Fox seconds this motion. I will now call for a vote. Please indicate by saying, by expressing your vote. Rich Young?
Aye.
Ralph Fox?
Aye.
Michael Martinez?
Aye.
Dinah Dumbrus? Aye. The motion carries. We will now begin work on the codification of the town ordinances. I will provide information to Joan, any information I have, and Joan has offered to reach out to the other company, too, to find out some information on how we can get this started.
Who made this? Rich made the motion.
Yeah.
And Ralph Fox seconded.
Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, so now we have the short, we have one short-term rental permit application for review. Joan sent this out to us earlier today. It was for an application for a short-term rental permit by Mr. Hune. Ralph, Rich, and Michael, have you had an opportunity to look at this?
No, I looked at it pretty much while I'm on the call. Like you said, it came out at eleven. I'm out of town for training, so the only question that I had right now, as I looked at the checklist at the very beginning of the page, is I saw on the third page from the bottom that the stipulation was that they had put a fence around the pool. Has that been done?
Yes, it has. They do have a fence on the pool.
Okay. And I'm assuming that they already closed the one-fifty in terms of check payable to Michiana Shores. I don't know if that's normally included in this entire document.
All right, Joan, can you answer that?
I'm pretty sure it's been paid. We can double-check it. Usually, we put a copy of a check in there or a copy of the receipt in the file.
All right, well...
So I can check that.
All right, please. Uh-huh, go ahead.
I'm pretty sure it's been paid because usually I don't send anything along without it being paid.
Okay, thank you.
But I can't swear to it.
Okay. Deb, would you happen to know anything about that then or not?
I do not know if the payment has been made.
All right, thanks. Okay, just thought I'd double-check. All right, how about you, Ralph? Did you review the document?
Well, I reviewed this extensively when I was part of the BZA, and I know that the fence request was put in place by Greg. So as far as I'm concerned, we move forward to approve on the condition that Joan verifies payment.
Okay, all right. Okay, so I have a motion to approve the short-term rental permit for Greg Hune. And, I'm sorry, Greg, what is your address again on Birchwood?
Thirty-six eighteen.
Thirty-six eighteen, a short-term rental permit for the Hune residence at thirty-six eighteen Birchwood. Ralph Fox has moved to approve. Do I have a second?
We do.
Wait, wait. On the condition that the check has already been paid. All right.
Correct.
Second?
I'll second back with that stipulation.
Okay, thank you. All right, Ralph Fox has moved. Michael Martinez has seconded that we accept and approve this short-term rental permit to Greg Hune on the condition that the check has already been paid. I will do a call vote. Please indicate your voice, your vote. Ralph Fox?
Aye.
Michael Martinez?
Aye.
Rich Young?
I, I don't know anything about this, so I have to abstain.
Okay, thank you. And Dinah Dumbrus, aye. We have re-approved the permits, so your, the permit is going to be approved pending the checking out of whether the check has been paid, the fee has been paid, okay? And this will be prepared for you, pick up, and you'll be notified when it will be ready once everything is, is, is completed, okay? Now, should we go back to the, that, what we missed with Laura? It's going to be attorney report, Laura, but maybe you can do the, we can discuss a little bit about the alternate purchasing ordinance.
What happened?
Laura?
I don't know. We lost everybody.
Oh, you didn't lose everybody. We're all still here.
Yeah, I'm here.
We're all here. You didn't lose us.
She's back. We can't hear you, though.
Yeah, Laura, we can't hear you. You're muted again? Okay, now it's...
Star six.
No, she's on the computer, but we're still not getting anything.
Well, Dinah, why don't you skip her and then come back?
Well, we, we are basically all done, and we need Laura's report, is what it is. We're at her spot right now, Rich. So let's give Laura a minute. She's going to try to... Laura, you still here?
Dinah?
Yes, Laura's going to try to sign it again. I'm sorry. Yes, Ralph?
And I don't know if this fits in this meeting or not, so just tell me to back off, but now that I'm on the town council, I think my role in the Plan Commission has to change from being a citizen member to a council-appointed member. And I know you do that, but I'm not sure if that has to be done officially in the meeting or just by emails.
Actually, yes, we have to appoint you in the meeting, so...
But, but he has to resign from the BZA, doesn't he?
He has already, well, that's the BZA, but we're talking about the Plan Commission right now.
I know. And he's right. He needs to be approved.
Yes, you have to be approved.
He's taken him's place, basically.
Yes. So, so technically, thank you. I'm glad that you reminded me about that, that we have to make the actual appointment. So I can act as the town executive and make the appointment for the town that Ralph Fox is now going to represent, be one of the representatives from the town council on the Plan Commission. And FYI to everybody else, we're now going to be looking for a new representative for the Plan Commission, so think about who you might recommend.
Not planned, BZA.
Now, I'm sorry?
Not the BZA.
For the plan, for the plan, no, no, we need someone else for the Plan Commission to take Ralph's citizen position. Ralph has also, just FYI, resigned from the BZA. He has sent in an official resignation today.
Could you send me a copy of that for the record?
Yes, I will, like I did just before our meeting, and we will also be looking for a member for the BZA to take Ralph's place. But, you know, we won't make any of those decisions right now, but that's something we have to think about and get something done going forward quickly, so. Okay? So let us, I don't know if Laura's, I need to check to see if Laura's trying to get in. Yes, she is. She's trying to get in the meeting. Okay, here we go. All right, maybe this will help. Laura? Is it better? Are you okay?
She's a lawyer, for crying out loud.
Yeah, what does that have to do with not being able to get on? He still can't hear you, Laura. I don't know what's wrong.
Try to call in, so...
Okay, you'll call in. Very good. Okay.
Why don't you vote on me and get this over with?
Kill it.
Well, somebody's got a clock that's really going. Very nice. Okay, here we go. Laura? Maybe we have you now. I just let you in.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you now. Thank you.
I think I'm on my phone.
You know what? We're getting an echo, though, so you need to turn off your computer or turn it on so we don't hear you on the computer.
Hold on a second, folks. Come on, guys, I gotta finish my supper.
Okay, it's working. It's working. Okay, so, can you hear me? This is very early. It's only eight nineteen.
That's okay. I haven't had my supper yet.
So sorry, people. Can you hear me now? Yes, we can, thank you. Okay, all right. Just a minute, I'm going to ask everybody who is unmuted to please mute yourself because there's still an echo on my end. I'm hearing a big echo. So I have a lot of people who are unmuted, so I need you to turn off. All right, Corinne McGrail, please turn yours off, too. Okay. Corinne walked away, I think, but when she gets back. Okay, go ahead, please, Laura.
Okay, so as I was saying, I will summarize this very quickly. I, I did look for other ordinances with regards to alternate purchasing agents. I've not been able to find a lot of them because it ties into what Ralph was just, the issue that's been raised previously tonight, and that is a lot of towns don't have the capacity to get their updated or their newer ordinances online. So this is going to be an ongoing problem with us. That's why I'm really excited to see that we're talking about the, the re-codification. But nonetheless, with regards to the alternate purchasing agent ordinance that we talked about last month, Dinah, if you want, I will go ahead and read this again. And one of the options we have, as you'll recall, we, we chose to use the town council president as the alternate. One of the samples that I did find also then, in the event the town council president is unable to fill in that capacity, then the vice president of the town council can fill in that capacity. That language could certainly be added to the ordinance that I read last month, if that's what the town council would like to do.
I think it would be good if you read it and if you would explain the reasoning why, you know, to do it this way rather than what we had originally thought about doing like assigning only one person. Okay, go ahead, please, Laura.
Okay, well, let's get that out of the way. The reason that we did not want to just name an individual party is because if something happens, then we have to revisit the ordinance all over again and go through this exercise repeatedly. So what we wanted to do is pick an office instead of an individual. So I will go ahead and read this. This ordinance does not yet have a number. So it's entitled Designating Alternate Purchasing Agent for the Town of Michiana Shores, Indiana. Whereas the Town of Michiana Shores ordinance number, oh, I guess it does. No, I'm sorry. Here we go. The Town of Michiana Shores ordinance number twenty-ten-zero-three establishes the Town of Michiana Shores purchasing agency as the, as the purchasing agency and designated the clerk treasurer to serve as the purchasing agent for the town when possible. And whereas Indiana Code Title V, State and Local Administration, Article twenty-two, Public Purchasing, Chapter Four, Purchasing Organization, Section Six, number of purchasing agents authorizes Town of Michiana Shores to establish more than one purchasing agent for the Town of Michiana Shores, its departments and agencies. And whereas the purchasing agency desires to establish an alternate purchasing agent in the event the clerk treasurer is incapacitated or otherwise unable to perform the functions of purchasing agent for the Town of Michiana Shores. Now therefore, be it ordained by the town council of the Town of Michiana Shores, Le Port County, Indiana, as follows. Section one, if the clerk treasurer is incapacitated or otherwise unable to perform the functions of purchasing agent for the Town of Michiana Shores, the functions of the purchasing agent should be delayed whenever possible until the clerk treasurer is available to perform these functions. Section two, for purposes of this ordinance, the phrase, quote, incapacitated or otherwise unable to perform the functions of purchasing agent, end quote, shall mean any period of disability, any period of vacation, any period of medical leave or other leave of absence from employment with the town or office with the town, or being out of town and unable to perform the necessary functions of purchasing agent for the town due to such absence. Section three, when the clerk treasurer is incapacitated or otherwise unable to perform the functions of purchasing agent for a prolonged period of time, e.g. a week or more, or for periods when the purchasing agent is unavailable and an emergency arises or there is an urgent need for a purchase, acquisition, or contract, the Town of Michiana Shores authorizes the town council president to act as an agent for the purchasing agency, specifically as an alternate purchasing agent in the administration of the duties of the purchasing agency. Section three, in the absence of a quorum of the town council and the clerk treasurer, the alternate purchasing agent may open bids publicly but must do so in the presence of one or more witnesses at the time and place designated in the invitation for bids. Section four, in all determinations and awards of contracts, purchasing agent shall provide prompt written notice to the successful bidder on behalf of the town. The purchasing agent may serve in this capacity if the clerk treasurer is unavailable. And then section five, when serving as an alternate purchasing agent and awarding contracts, the town council president shall maintain the following information: the name of each bidder, the amount of each bid, other such information required by law and rules governing competitive bidding. All information described in this section shall be subject to public inspection after each contract is awarded. Section six, any person acting as an alternative purchasing agent under this ordinance shall be subject to and fully comply with the town's purchasing ordinance, that's ordinance number twenty-ten-zero-three, as well as Indiana's public purchasing law, IC fifty-five-twenty-two et cetera. Section seven, the town council retains the right to change its designation or to designate additional purchasing agents as necessary. And then we just have the approved and adopted language at the bottom. And another thing that we spoke about last month was we could, we could add another alternate if that was to the desire of the town council. So that's where we left it.
Okay, thank you. All right, now, council members, any kind of questions, comments with regards to this? Ralph, you're muted.
So I like the wording that you have, and I do remember the conversation that occurred with the town council last month about initially looking at Rich as the guy to go to if there's an emergency. But again, long-term, that's, that's a bad idea because we don't want to put Rich into our ordinance implicitly, but we are somehow, I don't know if there's some way, I don't know that Rich even wants to be involved, but it seems like, at least for the things like Bob does with the streets department, Rich would be very well-suited to support him if Joan's not around, or she can't come to the phone. But I can't think off the top of my head of a way to, to do that.
Well, you know, my thought would be that with regards to the ordinance, like, that doesn't have to be a part of that ordinance, but that could be a part of a job description because Rich is the liaison for the road commissioner anyway, so that perhaps if the road commissioner needs to make a quick decision on something, that he could check in with Joan and/or Rich with regards to something like that.
It has to be a hierarchy. I don't want to give the impression otherwise. I mean, Joan should be the first contact based on the rules, but if Joan's unavailable and this whole thing came up because of that tree fell down on Michiana, Bob got him getting the okay on the spot, right?
Yes.
He, he needs to be able to go to somebody. Now, I'm fine with that being you, Dinah, but it...
No, I mean, it's like, I don't need these things to come to me. I agree with Laura, though, that it's a good idea to make an ordinance that doesn't have to be changed every single time something can happen. Let's say, God forbid, something happens, we have to change it again and again. It doesn't mean just for this year, for the next two... And it doesn't mean just for this year, for the next two years, but going forward, okay, so this works for that. I think that we have had some issues perhaps with regards to the road commissioner maybe not always, let's say, following the guidelines that he should be following. And I think that if perhaps he has been notified about it, but what we need to do is perhaps sit down, maybe Rich and the road commissioner sit down and literally go over the job task that, in his case, since this is something you brought up, with regards to spending any kind of money. And I think that we could actually put a limit on the spending of money, like, and a quick decision like this. This, for instance, when the tree fell down, it was enough to get it pushed to the side. And then you can make a decision on what to do with it later on. And the guy was across the street, so that would have been an easy solution, unfortunately it went another way. But I think that maybe a lot of these kind of problems could be avoided by actually making sure that we set something up. You know, so that people follow certain guidelines in their jobs, you know, when something has to be done.
Rich, what do you think about this?
I mute yourself, Rich. I think we lost him. Yep, he fell off the call, so hopefully he'll call back in.
Dinah, when we initially discussed this before it came to what it is now, I thought Rich, correct me if I'm wrong, was okay with this, in fact, I think he somewhat volunteered.
Yes, he is okay with being that second person. But the whole conversation came up when Laura was putting together the actual ordinance. And she suggested that if we make this an ordinance that specifically names Rich Young, that means if something happened, okay, you have to change it again. And it has to go through a presentation at a town council meeting, and it has to go through readings, and it has to go through votes. So if we put in an ordinance that basically, in general, just speaks to whoever perhaps the president is without naming them and the vice president, that then that provides a channel, you know, to go through, you know, you find one thing or other and it actually makes sense. And you don't have to change it every single time.
Yeah, I see what you're saying, I think Ralph, that's your kind of comment, you know, right, the hierarchy. So I do agree with that, and you know, I think it stems from the top and works way down. Instead of naming Rich, you know, the backfill for you would be me then. So I'm okay with that based on the discussion, and like you said, not having to waste any more time on this if something were to happen where somebody would, you know, not be on the town council anymore.
Okay, so this comes to.
This comes to something that Laura brought up at the beginning of her discussion about, is there a need for an additional backup being officially a backup being the vice president? Now, I think there should be. It's very unlikely, but in the world, there's always a chance that Joan's unavailable and Dinah's unavailable and a tree's fallen down and, you know, Bob's the kind of guy that'll make a decision, but we should give him, you know, a chance to contact people to make that decision. I would suggest putting the VP in the line.
Yeah, we could easily add that language, and as I was saying, one of the ordinances I found did that very thing. They first named the town manager, then they, the second in line was the town council president. And if both of those two individuals were unable to serve in that capacity, then the vice president of the town council would then step in.
I like that. Dinah, you.
And that is amazing.
I'm sorry, I'm trying to get Rich back on the call, but we can't get through to him.
Well, there's really, unless you make the language complicated and say if it's a, if it's a road commission issue and it's an emergency, in that case, the road commissioner goes to the liaison. Now, that's complicated language to put in just to, you know, make Rich the guy. I would like that to be the case, but I don't think the language should say that.
Yeah. You know, I think that a lot of this actually could be alleviated in any kind of questions by, you know, literally sitting down and going over, for instance, the job description and the tasks, a task description. I know that we need to do, we will definitely be doing that very sternly with the next building commissioner. And I think we need to do that in general, you know, if somebody's doing something that, you know, that, you know, these are your responsibilities and these are the actual tasks, so that when something comes up, you know, you know what to do. I mean, and all of us are given some kind of a guideline on what to do. I know when I worked with other organizations and other groups and stuff, and you had, as, for instance, when I worked as a treasurer, I acted as a treasurer at them, not work, but, you know, you could issue a check up to a certain amount, and after that it had to be approved. Because, you know, otherwise you're playing around with other people's money, and you can't do that. So I think it only makes sense that, you know, that any kind of a larger expense should actually be vetted by someone before, you know, they are incurred, because we really don't make that much money. You know, our town does not make that much money, and we can't just keep throwing it away, so.
It's a busy signal.
Okay, well, we're trying to reach him, but it comes up as a busy signal, I can't reach, I can't reach him now. So I don't know whether, Laura, what would be the next, I'm sorry, Michael, go ahead.
Go ahead Laura, I want to hear what you say.
Well, I think that what we should do, because this is an emergency right now, why don't I just go ahead and add that language? We've got a new member of the town council, so that changes the first time this was read. I've read it now publicly once, how about if I make that change? We can get it adopted next month, I will get this circulated far in advance of the next meeting, everybody have time to look at it. Hopefully we can get Rich a printed copy, and then we can just vote on it next month if there's no objections.
Alright, council. I'm going to.
We want to vote on, well.
I'm okay with that, this is.
And my point being, just so that I'm really clear, because I'm having a hard time hearing people. Let's go ahead and vote on this one now, contingent to the additional language to add an alternate to the alternate.
Okay, alright.
And then I will get that circulated in the next couple of days, and then we can just take it from there at the next month's meeting. Again, if no one has any objections to that.
No, well, I certainly don't. Gentlemen, any more questions on this then, or do we take Laura's suggestion on this?
No, I think we're all agreeing, and take office, name, and put in position.
Alright, well then we need to, someone to make a motion to work in this, to follow this process?
Martinez makes a motion.
Okay, so Michael Martinez, go ahead.
Makes a motion to update this document with official positions added.
Okay.
And an additional.
An additional.
Just again, just to be clear, and we're going to have two alternates listed. We're going to have, first it goes to the clerk treasurer, the second alternate will be the town council president. Then we'll have another alternate to that, if I understood correctly, everybody wanted another backup, we will go ahead and add the vice president of the town council, third in line. That way we've covered all bases.
Yes.
Yes.
Alright, that sounds good, okay. Thank you very much, so we have a motion, and we have a second. I will now call for a vote, so, Michael Martinez?
Aye.
Ralph Box?
Aye.
Dinah Dumbrus?
Aye.
We have three, we lost our fourth member, so, because this is not a, you know, I think this is adequate for us to move forward on this particular motion, okay?
Dinah, this is, I do like the idea that you were discussing of having some sort of level that Bob can spend on his own, I don't know if that's written down now, but, you know, he shouldn't have to come to Joan for, to spend a hundred bucks.
No, 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 that's, and I agree with that, I know Joan, is there some kind of a threshold for Bob right now?
There isn't a threshold, but you are totally missing that we have a budget. And the reason to have people contact me is to make sure we have monies in the budget or we will have to do additional appropriations. That's the main reason to have someone or anyone who spends money to check with me.
Yes.
Or whoever is the clerk treasurer.
Yes, so we understand, yes, but the problem is, Bob's first comment to me was that he couldn't reach you, so.
That's baloney, he didn't try.
Regardless, regardless, even if he didn't try, that was the first comment. So that means that if going forward, there is another person, at least, somebody could be consulted rather than him going out on his own. And I don't think any of the town council members are going to say, yeah, go ahead, spend $5,000 on whatever you want to do, you know? I don't think that's going to happen, I can't guarantee, but I don't think that they will. But to that thing, but go ahead. So in other words, currently we don't have a limit for him, correct?
There's a limit on credit cards.
Okay, but that's credit cards, but I mean, does he have a limit to authorize at this point, let's say, a $1,600 repair on the truck, on one of the pickup, let's say, without checking with anyone?
He's only done that once. But there is nothing in writing as to what his limit is.
Okay, alright.
And he's going to tell you when he takes in a truck, or he takes in the mower to get anything done on it, he has no idea what it's going to cost, that's the first thing he's going to tell you.
Well, I mean, we all understand that, but when I take my car in, I get an estimate on it, and then I make a decision, yes or no, so.
He doesn't do that because he feels that the equipment has to be maintained. And he just goes in and has it done.
Well, maintenance means he's taking care of it, okay? Repair is something else. Ralph, are you going to say something else?
It depends how you look at it.
Well, you know, and I don't want to impose, you know, the rules from the organizations I've worked with in the past, because they were businesses, but, you know, it's pretty common in the business world that if something is above your level of approval, you gotta get it approved. That's, so, why not sit down with Bob, have Rich sit down with Bob, and come up with, you know, a single level of approval or approval for certain different things, so that Bob has some freedom, but we need to control what's going on if it's a lot of money. I don't think that's a big deal.
No, I agree. Yeah, I think that makes a lot of sense.
Talk to Rich about it, and, you know, he has a good relationship with Bob, and they should be able to work something out. Of course, we need to approve it, but let them work on it.
I think that sounds like a good idea, I like that. Michael?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, so we move, I don't know that we need to vote on anything for that right now, this is just something that concerned us. So, but I do think that we can't forget about it, we should, and I will talk to Rich about this tomorrow morning then. Okay, Rich regarding Bob, okay. So, let's see, Laura, did you have anything else to report to us?
I did not.
Okay, sounds good, thank you, okay, I think we don't have any more. Now, I'm not sure if anybody had any other miscellaneous business to bring up. I know that Joan, I asked her about reports about any other kind of things, there were no communications received outside of all of those that I've received with regards to, you know, acting as the, you know, interim conduit for building permits. And that's about it, but I do want to mention three actually different things right now. Oh no, let's do a public comment, is there anybody left? Everybody's gone. Okay, everybody gave up on us, I think, on public comment. Unless Steve Twistek wants to say something as a public instead of a police chief. But otherwise, if not, they're all gone, I'm going to ask for council comments.
I would like to say something as just a public person, just public comment.
Yes, please.
I'm just, I just want to bring up my concern about the garlic mustard. It's really a terribly invasive plant that really beats out many other native species in the area. And it has just really gotten out of hand, particularly along the banks of White Ditch there. And all along that trail. And so, I just, I don't know if the town has done anything before, you know, often towns have a, you know, a garlic mustard picking day, but we're past that date now, because you can't do it once it's flowered.
Okay.
But, you know, and it has to be, you know, it's a tough thing, you have to pick it early and you have to black bag it to keep it from growing. But I would hope, you know, over the years, I've seen it really take over everything, there used to be more kind of native tiger lilies that are now gone because of garlic mustard and other species. So, I just, you know, want to put it on your radar and hope that we can do something about that in the future.
That sounds like a good idea, but if we can't do it now, it's too late in the year now, then maybe we plan for next year?
Yeah, but yeah, just I would hope to get it on the radar, I mean, maybe I'll take some pictures now, so next year we see how bad it got.
Yes, well, that is a good idea.
Along the creek, you're right.
Yeah, it's, yeah.
Yeah, and a lot of people are actually concerned about that, and people do. Last year when somebody mentioned it, I know people were running around like crazy trying to get it, but maybe they were too late in the season as well, because those seeds are like, oh, they go all over the place then, you know, when you pick it then. But I thank you for the comment, I think that's really great, you know, for that, anymore?
April is really the day, April is the month that you really have to get it.
Okay, so alright, so we plan for next year now, we're going to hold you to this to help us organize for next year, okay, for April, alright.
Yep, alright, we'll do, thank you.
We'll put that down, thank you. Okay, any other public comments, and if there's no public comments, then I'm going to move to council.
Yeah, I have something for council.
Okay, council comments, okay, go ahead, Michael.
Can somebody confirm that we've seen signature logs out this week?
Yes.
They are.
Yes, they have.
They've been here.
They've been here, it looks like they've done a pretty good job, I actually drove around to visit some of the spots that had large piles and some of them that actually had sort of messy piles that had a lot of logs, they picked those up too. And they picked up the extra sticks that Sonia had left up at the head of the town, you know, at the T intersection and.
I saw that.
Back on Sunset Drive, all the way to the dead end, and they were picked up, so, yeah. I think they did a good job. If somebody complains about leaves now, that means they didn't get them out on time, you know.
Yeah, I think the first year has been very successful, Michael. I've actually had several unsolicited comments from people telling me that they're really glad we finally did this.
Great, thank you. Yeah, you know, in the next, no, I just, I wrote in the comments saying thanks Ralph for the feedback, positive feedback, so, you know, that was a one-year contract, and I think this was the last of the four installments of leaf and sweep pickups, so in the next couple of months, I think we got to start gearing up for another one in the fall, at least get the payment station going.
Yeah.
Because hopefully we can renew a contract with signature logs against it, to your point, because they've done a great job.
I think he's done a great job, I don't know that we even need to look for somebody else, as long as we can keep our price maybe. You know, the same would be really good, because they were really great and responsive right away, so.
And I do have a question, Dinah, in terms of my education on this, if we were to go ahead and try to resign, we would still need to bid it out, right? Again, or no?
Joan?
Well, yeah, you definitely should, unless there was a, there was a contract that specifically articulated that we could renew. And I, it's always advisable.
Yeah, I didn't read the contract, I didn't have access to it at the time, but, yeah, you definitely want to put that auto-renewable unless one of you.
And to Laura's point, it was not in their terms of renewal.
Yeah, okay, so we have to make sure we do that, okay. Alright, so if we have to get some extra bids, we'll get the extra bids and, you know, make a determination then. Okay, thank you. I would like to say, does somebody else in the council want to make a comment? I had something to go.
Hey, great, great job everyone on the cleanup.
Oh, thank you very much, that's what I wanted to say.
I don't want to steal your thunder, you go ahead.
No, 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 all I wanted to do was thank everybody who showed up, okay? So we had council members and council members' families and others show up to help clean up, so that was really good. Rich was there, and Joan was there, and Ralph and Teresa were there, Ray came out, and Selena Burns came out, Brenda Heckman came out, so it was very nice, you know? We cleaned up, and I have to say, one of the comment that was made by everyone picking up was that. up was that, wow, this year there was less trash than there was last year, it was really amazing. So we don't know what did it, whether COVID did that to everybody or something else did it, but it was nicer. Maybe people are just paying attention, so I'm going to just say publicly that let's keep our areas clean, and if we do see trash, please pick it up and take it with you when you go for a walk and all this, so that's the important part, carry a bag, not just for your dog, but carry a bag to put some trash in, so that's pretty good. The only other thing I was going to say is also about the leaves, that, you know, the leaf pickup line, it looks like it went really well, and everything looks nice, neat and clean and stuff. So I think people really made use of the fact that this service is available, because I'm seeing places cleaned out that were not cleaned out in the past, probably because of how difficult it is to, you know, dispose of all the leaves. I think that that is about it for me, except that I, yeah, go ahead, Ralph.
Well, I had one comment, and I'm not sure if the town council has discussed this before, but I would like to begin the discussion of, let's go back to face-to-face meetings. I don't know what everybody thinks, I don't know if there's rules about it, but we need to have that conversation, not necessarily tonight, because not everybody's here. I just think we need to discuss going back to meeting.
Yep, okay. Well, and we know that, you know, we are going to go, I know that there's movement within the government in Indiana, I'm not quite sure where it's going to stand right now, but there were suggestions made that meetings might be a mix, whereas before, council people were required to actually be present at a meeting for a vote to take place. But I think now there has been a move that there, as long as you've got, I know a larger number that are actually there and present, the others could vote remotely too, as long as they're participating in the meeting. So we'll see what kind of mix comes out of that, out of the legislature, you know, for us to follow. But it is true, you know, you're right, it's just that for the plant commission and for the other things, it will be good to be back in face-to-face kind of meetings.
Yeah, the BZA has never gone virtual, they've always met face-to-face, and it's a, you know, it's a small group, it's five people, but most of all those meetings have been SDR permit requests, and there's always an audience, and the rules are followed very well, there's proper spacing, so it should be considered, but that's it, let's not...
All right, great, thank you, thank you, that's a good one. The only other thing I was going to say, and I probably could have brought it up under other kind of business, was that I think we need to look into the replacement of water lines, because there are some streets in Michiana shores that have very small water lines with very little pressure, you know, of water coming in. So I think that we're going to need to proceed and, you know, look for this. I could have mentioned it before, but, you know, only came to mind now.
Was that Michigan City that would do that?
Michigan City to do that, yes, because they are a water provider.
So it's the water line in the street that's restricted, not the water line to the house?
Uh, no, this is the water line in the street, because that carries the water, and if that one's not carrying a lot of water, it's coming through slower, it's going to go even slower to your house.
Right.
So, and I do know that we have concerns, there are some residents who ask questions every year with regards to that as well. One of the things, of course, Bob wasn't here, and then another question I get asked is the streets and repair of the streets, so we need to start working on, you know, something like that, but that will be once Bob comes back. And Joan, I think that we're going to be able to start applying for that, the community crossings again, right?
Right, we can still apply for it.
Yes, so let's...
You have to have someone who...
And I'm going to start looking, I'm going to look at somebody right here now on that screen about, because that's, you know, putting together grants, okay? I'm looking at you, you see me? So that we could get to work on that to help us get some more money with regards to roads, you know?
Dinah, I understand the grants, we have a five-year plan, so all we have to do is pick up on that five-year plan.
Okay.
But we need someone who knows how to administer the grant. The last time was quite a fiasco, we need to have someone who...
Yes, that, yes, I understand.
Can keep all the reports, do the reports, keep track of all of, every, everything that's been done on it, we also have to have a paper report as well as a digital.
Yes, I totally agree, and, you know, I have someone in mind, I hope that this person agrees to help out with this, though, okay? Okay, we'll see what happens, you know, with regards to that. Okay, if there are no other questions or comments, then the dates of the meetings were on the agenda, plant commission will be June 1st, next town council will be June 8th, the BZA is meeting on May 27th, and the park board will meet on May 24th. So if I hear no other questions or comments, I will adjourn this meeting.
Thanks, Dinah.
All right, no questions.
Eight fifty-two.
Thank you all to everybody.
Eight fifty-two, thank you.
All right, good night, everybody, take care, see you soon in person, bye.